Good morning, everyone, and happy Monday. It is Monday, June 26, 2023, 9:32 a.m. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and get started. Sorry, we're running a couple of minutes behind, but thank you for your patience. So, welcome to my board colleagues, Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff that are here in person, and to all those that are joining us online, and to any guests that are here in person as well. Welcome, and for any guests that are joining us virtually, welcome, and thank you for joining us. We will call this special meeting to order this morning, and we'll go ahead and get started. So, as we do at every board meeting, I'll read our board norms and protocols. As a board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, welcome, and thank you for joining us for this special board meeting this morning. With that, Ms. Smith, can you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. This morning, can I have a motion to approve today's special agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing, hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you again, board, for making time today. I know Monday mornings can sometimes be a little bit difficult at the start of work week, so I appreciate everyone taking time to meet this morning. As we continue our budget conversation, so that we can continue rolling and work through our budget, we've had a couple of budget meetings and conversations around the budget today is really geared toward to continue our budget discussion, to allow for questions. I know we'll hear from staff here shortly regarding our budget. Hopefully, you all had a chance to take the survey that was sent to you over the weekend regarding our budget priorities. If you haven't yet, I think there's still an opportunity to do so because we definitely want to capture everyone's feedback. So if you had trouble or just didn't get to it, that's okay. We'll make sure we get your voice in there as well. If you have any questions on that, please let us know as well. And then I'll just also say, we might get to this as well today regarding our board budget. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for getting information to complete a draft of the board budget. I sent that to you all via email yesterday. Ms. Smith, if you could just make sure that you upload that into Board Doc so that everyone has access to that as well. But thank you for getting the information needed to complete that. And again, that's just a draft budget for our board based on conversations we've had as a board. So if we get to that, hopefully, we can have further discussion and your input in that as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and kick off our budget discussion, and I'll hand it off to Dr. Stubblefield.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. A couple of things, and then we can definitely follow you all's lead. I did want to take a moment and introduce a couple of student interns that we have here at District Office over the summer, and I invited them to be a part of the first hour if we are looking at the building profiles and talking about the building needs assessments, just so that they are aware. And I'll introduce them by name. We have Kirsten Collins, who will be a senior next year. She's a student at Alfred Fairfax, and she actually completed all of her credits and will be a part of the Botec program next year and has taken some college courses. We have Kyla Emery, who has gradu-- Kyla, you graduated, correct? No, you'll be a senior. Okay. And Kyla, what school are you at again?
Washington.
Washington High School. And Kyla is interning in HR and with me and Don. And then we have Madeline Lopez, who-- Madeline, what school are you at?
I already graduated.
Madeline is gr-- see, I've mixed them up. Madeline has graduated. She's doing her intern in the DEI department and some other areas. So they are all here. We are just exposing to them is all things education at the district level. So they will be here, and they're taking notes, and then they can ask us questions when they come back with us. But I did share with them, if we're in this discussion, if someone lets me know that they have a question about something, I can share it openly. So I wanted us to first start, unless you have objection objections. I did share, based off some questions the last time, about the building needs assessments. When we went back and we were reflecting on that, the board has access to the building needs assessments from this current year and the previous year. And what I believe, I think, was wanting to be captured is what progress is being made and how are we, like, tracking that to better inform the building needs assessments? So this was our first stab at the building profiles, was our first attempt. And you can ask if there is information you feel like that is, you would like to see on that. We can definitely add that moving forward or discuss it. But the building needs assessments, the template for that is driven by KSDE, so we don't have a lot of flexibility in that in order to make sure that we are in alignment with that. One thing that I did want to point out about the building needs assessments, that there is a category on there that says curriculum needs. And typically, that's where you'll see where the buildings are doing things that are customized to their building, from tutoring to the mentoring programs, to chess clubs and partnerships that they have, that they are uniquely using their building budgets that we've allocated to address those. With the district level and what we bring to the board is typically around staffing because that's where we are looking at, it's a greater cost to it, and that's where we're saying yes or no. But the other stuff that they're doing at the building level, they typically have decided with their building leadership teams, based off of their stakeholder feedback and those kind of things. It's not that we can't go back and ask or inquire, why are they doing this at this school and not that school, or this school's had success? But this is how we're starting to capture that. Baseline, all of the buildings have, they all use the same curriculum. They all have instructional coaches. And then all of the support that comes from District Office is the same, where there are variances is staffing when they put in specific requests, and then what they uniquely choose based off their demographics and their input. It should be input from staff and stakeholders around those unique programs that they're implementing. We did, for our CSI and ISI schools, as a district, we do things in, for all of those schools that are similar. So the TPT tutoring that's at the high schools and the middle schools in person, all of them have that. And then when we made varsity tutoring and then shift to proximity tutoring, all of the buildings had access to that, and it was based off the students that agreed to do it and/or if they had the staffing to support it, if it was doing during outside the school day, if the kids were on campus. So I said a lot, I'll pause and see what specific questions you may have around the building needs assessments or the building profiles. And then I'll remind the board, whenever we come back to do, like, where you are proving the final budget, you still, similar to you had last time, will have to do those three assurances from KSDE, and that's not in this meeting. We'll put it on the agenda so it's on record that you've reviewed the building needs assessments and those things that you have to do around that by state statute. But today is more of a discussion to make sure that we're giving you the right information.
Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Okay. So, thank you. And for clarity purposes, then, the building needs assessments that the staff and/or business leader completed is in the library?
Correct.
So then we have to match that up to then this paper that is, that is what? What is this?
This is a profile of every building. So when we, the building needs assessment is in the library. But at the last board discussion, there was questions around, like, how the perform, how the money we're investing, what are the outcomes? How are we tracking that? What are we looking at to know the ROI on the things that we are investing?
Right. That was based on last year's, last year's needs assessments? Because that's the, help me understand, is that the framework you work from to make your staffing blah, blah, blah changes for these outcomes?
Yeah. So these outcomes are based off of what was implemented up to this point? And then the 23, 24 building needs assessments staff has completed? We have already allocated staff because if we don't allocate it prior to March, they can't fill it. If we're going to add staff, if there was something to come up and we needed to add staff, we still would have that option, but the chances of filling those positions are pretty low just because of the timing.
Right. And your clarity will help the interns understand the questions and the answers. However, we already know your answers, but that's great because it provides them the framework.
Yes.
So that in, and help me again. So actually, I need to look at the profiles first and then see what the building leaders are asking for now to move forward to what we, what in my opinion would drive the resources that are necessary to improve student achievement. Is that correct?
That is correct. Like, matching the profile with what they're asking, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
Yeah. So I have just a few questions. My first question relates to, you talked about the baseline, baseline objectives of all of the buildings. But then we talk, we continue to talk about programs separately. But I continue to have this question around equity and makes what choice in reference to what programs a school building should have. While I want to let building leaders continue to be the driving force behind that, I also get concerned because similar to math, IXL, some buildings were using it, having lots of success. And then we have buildings who have very low math numbers. But the translation of, like, actually finding a program that works effectively with the uniqueness of the students. So I'm just trying to figure out, how do we find, how do we evaluate equity amongst programs? But also equity amongst programs when families are like, why doesn't my school have this? And how do parents and individuals within the school that are outside of the professional structure get the opportunity to also say, this is what we also want to be prioritized? And we talk a lot about Title I, and we talk about site councils, but I'm not sure that that is actively a huge piece of where parents or community can show up and their voice be heard, so.
So, thank you for sharing that. And I will say, this is, this is the first time we created this. So as we have conversations, we've shared with building principals and staff here, we will still start talking about building needs assessments in September this year, based off of these profiles, because we can see, like, this particular school trending in the right direction. These are all the things that they have that are unique to their school, and they will be able to talk to one another about, what are you doing? Because in some cases, they don't necessarily know, like, exactly what the other schools are doing. So part of one of the shifts in how principals will meet this year, they'll meet by levels in their PLC networks, and that's where they will be looking at this data and talking about the unique things that are at their schools. And they'll act, those meetings will actually be held at a school so that they are actually walking through and seeing it. So what you are saying is what we are aspiring to put in place to make it happen so that we can look at the ROI. The other thing it will let us see is we can go back and look. If you've been doing this for a year and there's no movement, we can say, we don't have any evidence to continue this. Here are the options that we know that are actually working for students, that we now have data to support that. So moving forward, I think what you're asking, you'll see more in a transparent way in regarding, like, the Title I and site councils and parent organizations. I think by us having this, we'll be able to share it more, in a more public manner, and for people to make more informed decisions or ask the right questions and for buildings to look at it. So I think this will be the first year to what you're asking.
Perfect. And I also just want to say thank you to the team. I know DARA and all of them, D R A, whatever that word is, that you all worked very hard to get this. So in an ideal world, I want to make sure we're all on the same page, what quadrant is it that you would want, that we would want each of our buildings to be in? I want to, and I'm speaking specifically to, like, there's variances, and I see some in green, but they're in a lower quadrant than I had one. So I'm guessing there are other factors that are moving it. But I just want to be clear, is it quadrant?
So technically, I think we would want them all, like, at least here or above, like--
Excuse me. What is here?
I'm gonna say the midpoint, because this is the form, the paper that we're referring to, we would want them all in greens and yellows, and that would draw you more to the middle. Because right now--
Quadrant one and/or two? Because even the quadrant numbering is unique.
Right. So you would want them more centered, like balanced.
Towards the middle.
Yes.
But on the--
Because if you were greens and yellow, you would be closer to the center. Like, so the first one that I'm looking at, Alfred Fairfax, they're, they have lots of greens around the building risk factors, which includes climate and culture and all of those things. But they have reds in the other space. So if they were more balanced, you would be more to the center.
Okay.
Yeah.
And for someone such as Alfred Fairfax, which just happens to be the first one, zero percent. Because I also, what I found is, while there are some increases because it shows the 22 rate, but it also shows the 22, 23 rate for the district averages, some of them, they're decreasing or they're increasing. And so I think sometimes the percentage is throwing me off because in some, you want it to be higher, but in some, you want it to be lower.
Yeah. So a couple of things. Alfred Fairfax, because of their small, unique number, they'll probably always be zero in, like, the testing areas because it would be identifiable. So we would present that in a different, like, this was the first flush. So we would have to account for that. And then they may not necessarily have sophomores who are actually, they may only have a few who are actually taking the state assessment because they may only have a few sophomores that year. But as far as the percentages, like, when the data team put this together, it's in data way. We can have larger discussions about, like, how can we make this more clear for the layperson? But because of the quick turnaround, that's what it looks like. But in some cases, yes, you want the number to be higher, and in other place, like, chronic absentism, you want it to be low. But the number of students we move to threes and fours, we want that to be high. So just creating a key to talk about what that looks like. And that's the kind of feedback you all can give us that we can share. The one thing that is missing on here that we'll be able to add in, that is not finalized for this year, but when we give the cap assessment, is the number of students that we moved from one to two. Because that's where, that's why the state assessments are not finalized, because that's where, when they make those small tweaks, it can impact you in a more positive way. So we don't share those small numbers while they are verifying the data around that. But that will be included too, because that's also important to show the complete picture of how students are making progress. So like, students we move from one to two, or twos to threes, that kind of thing. That data will be added when we give the update in the fall, when the data is finalized.
Okay. And my last question, so for student risk factors, for the last two inputs, those are numbers that we technically have no ability. If I understand, this is the percent of student population that is ELL and the percent of sped population within those buildings, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's not a number that, for lack of a better word, that we can physically change. And so those yellow and greens will also just depend on the enrollment?
The enrollment and where we have specialized programs and those kind of things. So we can't, like, we can't necessarily control, you know, if they have an identification. But if we look, and let's say there's a school that we put three specialized programs, and then they already have, like, a large ELL pop, like, we can control, like, they don't have to be both. But that's just something that would be in front of us. And also for, to make us more aware that that school may need different supports or more supports. So that's why that information would be in there. And so that when you're looking at the data, you're looking at the complete picture. Like, this school over here that, you know, may be doing very well, but when you look at those risk factors, it's low. So that's just something to take into consideration. And it doesn't mean anything in particular, but it's just a piece of data to be informed about. Yeah. Yes.
I'll ask the question based on what you just said. If my, if I understand what you just said, if a school needed different resources to improve student achievement, when would we make that decision?
So those decisions actually have been made based off the building needs assessments. What I'm saying, when we look at this profile, if we see a school that, one of their risk factors or high risk factors may be the number of ELL and/or the number of students identified as special education, that's where we can internally to continue to monitor the data to make sure that they have the right support. On the front end, we believe that we are staffing in that manner, but there may be some nuances that come up, like, you know, kids may be transferred-- Like, you know, kids may be transferred, additional kids may move in or be transferred to a specialized program. So when we're looking at that data, we would make sure that we're talking with special ed. To make sure that they have the appropriate staffing to support an increase of number. Or if it decreases, we may need to reallocate the staff. But in general, we made, yeah.
Yeah.
But in general, we make that decision. We started, and I'm looking at Ms. Kaiser and Ms. Walker. We started those building needs assessment conversations in January. And then they are finalized by at least March.
And that's the form you gave us?
For the, on the building needs. Yes, where we say, they asked for this number of staff. They were allocated this number based off of this information.
Okay.
So yes.
And again, we'll circle back whether that, it may be perhaps based on now more data. We can, the board can not challenge or question, but, but understand that, that perhaps there could be adjustments to those decisions. Correct?
Correct, and just that, the, the challenge, well, yes, absolutely correct. It just would be where are the dollars coming from?
Exactly.
And can we actually fill those positions?
Okay, got that. So then this, another thing you said that I don't understand how we're supposed to know. Now, just again, looking at Argentine, would they say they have proximity learning?
Teachers?
No, on the, on the needs assessment?
No.
Okay.
That, that data is actually in the board agenda on which schools actually have it. Have the teachers and the number of teachers. But what it does not, let me find, we showed the teacher ratio, the teacher absent rate. But that may be a personal, and if I'm missing it, it may be a piece of data we need to add.
Does say TFT tutoring, so that's when I'm, I'm looking at, you said, look at the curriculum needs.
Oh, you're looking at the building needs assessment?
Right, right.
Okay, I was looking at the profile. So, yes, so if they say TPT tutoring, that may, that means that they have it.
Okay.
If they didn't put TPT tutoring there.
But does, but that does say proximity learning, does not say?
I don't have it up.
Question, the question is what you, your comment of, do we know as a board at each school? Whether they had proximity learning and the comment you made, if they had enough teachers to fulfill it?
Yeah, so as a board on tomorrow's agenda for the renewal of proximity. We did show which schools had them and how many teachers or sections that they had. So I can, so we have that information?
Okay, we've got that information, but, but again, we can use it. We can use it as we look at assigning resources. That's a weird way to put it, but spending money on a certain school so that its students. So that there's a greater chance to improve student achievement. And again, here's this caveat, those are not the same students that they will have probably next year. So we're looking at year old data. But this is, these profiles are from when?
This is from this year's data.
This year's data?
Yes, 2022, 23 data.
Okay, and help me understand this. Like under student risk factors, suspension, 20% red, below the district average. So that's, that's still in red or should it be in green?
For, are you looking at Alfred Fairfax?
Yeah, very first one.
Yeah.
Suspension is 20, 23 rate, 20, 21% suspensions is, is below the district average.
Yeah, it's below the district average. And actually, Dr. Conrad is not present. I can get clarification on that, but it's still high. So there are some things as a district as a whole. We are, when you compare it to the other schools, you may be below the district average. But there are things that are still high overall. But I would just have to get clarity on that. I can't answer that today, yes.
Where on, on this sheet is, does it say the district average? Excuse me, help me, just help me find it.
That is exactly what I was gonna say as, I was like, before we get too far. I, I think it would be helpful if there was like maybe the district average next to it. Or if it's added as part of that legend that we talked about. Around what numbers we want to be high, but also what is the district average and where do I have that information? I also just wanted to note to Dr. Nguyen's point that I think the proximity learning piece, as you talked about adding some, adding additional things. I think that is important to the relation to the building profile. Because we know that there is a difference between having online learning that is by choice. And online learning that is because of staffing issues. And I think that is replicated in the learning achievement gap or goal. Because if I always have an English teacher that is online, that is different than me always having an English teacher that is in person. Where the choice would be for them to be in person. But unfortunately, due to factors out, sometimes out of our control, they're online. And so I think having that as part of this profile to Dr. Nguyen's point will also help us be able to see kind of the full picture. As we're looking at this, ELA data numbers may continue to be down if we continue to see. That this school continues to have English teachers that are proximity learning versus. While we hope that all of it is great sometimes, that's just not how students learn, so.
Yes, so I have noted those things. But I think another piece in addition to proximity learning, if it's not on here, is just unfilled positions. Because sometimes there's a long-term sub in there. And that I think is good information. So we can talk about what that looks like and include that moving forward as well.
Last point, just on this initial conversation. Guess what, and I, I listen to what you say. So if I understood what you said, is that then after today, and I don't know what we're gonna get to today. That you then will put together, I guess, a budget for the schools that will address student achievement?
We've already put together the budgets. They're in the drive, the department and the building. And all of those budgets have been done. What we are now, hindsight is 2020. We're pulling together what they actually talked about and discussed in their building needs assessments. To say, I need X number of staff. And then if you look on there, in Argentina, like they were like, they want to continue TPT tutoring. Or, and I can pull it up, and those curriculum needs, that's where they ask for.
Looking right at it.
Yeah. That, in that box, that's where they advocated or said they were gonna do in a, outside of stash staffing. Here are the things that we're going to do to address those needs. So they've done that. We now are just trying to pull together a way for us to continue to progress monitoring it. So we can, there are some things we can adjust mid-year. So to Ms. Russell's point, if we had schools that were doing IXL and we saw third quarter, those schools. I mean, at the end of first quarter, those students had higher math scores. We could have then went and said, we're gonna implement IXL at these other schools at the semester. So we'll do better progress monitoring around that, those types of things that are unique to certain schools this school year. And the principals will have those conversations throughout the school year with one another.
So the other question is that these, this wish list from the building. Are, you stated, you just addressed the staffing needs. Are these items paid for in the budget that you are submitting to us?
Out of their building budget. So, so under Argentina's, under section three, if people are following there. She, so what the building and the leadership team were, they were advocating for summer school, which we offer summer school to everyone. They also have debate, chess club, robotics, focus coaching and TPT tutoring. Are the things that they placed in there for the extended learning opportunities that are provided to students. And the things that they may include on there. And if you look at parent needs, this is where I think to your point, Ms. Russell. We would have to do a better job of making sure that parent knows that those kind of things are there and that can inform it. This is how they say that they are addressing and getting parents involved. And so those are the things that, that the building, and I'm not saying these are ideal. But this is, this is what they put in there. And here's where we can give better coaching and guidance around where we see gaps in that, those kind of things.
So do we see a specific budget per, for the schools? How do we know, I mean, you said, yes, they're in there. And you didn't say clearly, from my understanding. So they're, they're all clumped together?
Um, no, aren't the individual building budgets in the board, in the board library? No, oh, they're not. I'm sorry. I was mistaken, I thought they were with, I thought we provided those along with the.
So. Smith is saying that they are in the, in board docs, the, the building budgets? Can you share where there might be, Ms. Smith, just so we can? And if anyone wants a printed copy, Ms. Smith has offered to make printed copies of those, if someone would like that.
I just need to know where it is.
The department budgets are in there.
Got that.
Ms. Kaiser, where, can you come forward? Like, I think if it's not in there, we definitely.
Okay.
Can provide them, correct? I'm saying that, we definitely can provide them, but they are all clumped together somewhere, building budgets.
Well, the teacher allocation sheet shows what they were allocated by the district, based on their student count. What they asked for and then what they were able to pay for out of their own budget. And then additional needs.
Now, we got that first, didn't we?
I'm sorry.
We got that first.
It is on, it's in the teacher allocation in the building needs assessment folder. The very last document is teacher allocations. But I have not provided the dollar amounts like for title and things like that. But the teacher allocations is in there showing what they were given and what they purchased themselves.
Okay, we'll, we'll find everything.
Okay, so, and I just want to, Ms. Kaiser, because we do, each building has their own individual budget. So that's not a, a challenge for us to upload each school building by their total budget.
We can definitely do that.
Yeah, so we can add that. We'll, we can add that link and have each building on there for you all to see their individual budgets.
And that may be a very narrow interpretation of the legislation. But the legislation does specifically say, the board will consider each attendance center. Attendance center equals building.
Yes.
So it may be a narrow interpretation, but once again, it's our responsibility. So thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Kaiser. And, and I appreciate your consideration of responding to my questions, thank you.
And we can add it, that's not a problem at all.
And again, if anyone wants printed copies, I know the assessments and there's a lot in board docs and the building budgets, we'll get in there as well. But if anyone would like a printed copy, please let Ms. Smith know and she'll make sure. Thank you, Ms. Smith, we'll make sure to get a printed copy of either the budgets or the assessments or whatever it is that you would like to you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions now regarding either the profiles or the building needs assessments? And we'll get the building budgets added so that you can review them before we come back and ask you to do the requirements on the state statute. Say that you reviewed those items.
Yes, Ms. Page.
How long does it take to do this?
I did not do it, so I cannot speak to that. I will say, it, I, I, I can't speak to that. I, I know we had a couple of meetings since the last meeting. And it was pulled together, but, because there were some other things put on hold. It took about a week, once we went back and forth on the things that we talked about. So I don't want to speak to that, but I can find out.
Okay, no, I was wondering, so hopefully next year, we can see a comparison.
Oh, absolutely, so once it's created, we can, once it's created, we can update and add it. It'll take less time, because we, this is data that we're already keeping track of, so it can be pulled in that. So once it's created, it's easier to do it on a regular ongoing basis. So next year, at the beginning of the cycle, I mean, beginning of the conversation, we can provide, once we have all of the cap preliminary data and those kind of things. We can provide a comparison from this year to next year, yeah.
And then just as a follow-up to Ms. Russell's and Dr. Wayne, and it sounds like it would be helpful for the full board. But just adding, and I know you made a note there, Dr. Doublefield. So adding the district averages, what those are next to the, each of the, those areas, what the goals might be for those. And that would be helpful, so.
Yeah.
And you can get those to us when.
Yes.
Completed, just let us know, thank you.
You know, when we had the, the long response, I think it had the staffing needs. We discussed adding a few other columns, do you remember what there were? And I don't. So I'll go back and look at, maybe we can go back and pull the tape. Because we talked about adding a couple more columns even to that document.
Yeah, I would have to go back, because I think what we captured on this profile, but I'll go back.
I'll go back to.
I don't recall, yeah.
It, it is a living document.
Yes, all of these things are living documents and you can.
Yeah, and I would just, and just to put a pin in it, but to also acknowledge, if we are using this as our, as our building profiles. If there is some way to add some type of benchmark related to diploma plus, if that is our North Star, if that is the thing. How did the building profiles reflect our goal? That way, when we're having those conversations around, are we meeting, are we getting closer? It is somehow reflected in these profiles.
Yep, and there are a couple of things that are unique to secondary schools that are not. So we'll also make sure, although it may, it may not, yeah. Because like, we only use proximity learning at middle and high school. So it wouldn't be on an elementary profile. And then like the actual graduation rate for diploma plus, we only see that at the high schools. But what we can provide is like the percentage of experiences. We have some other benchmarks, so it would look different at each level. Am I saying that correct, Dr. Fornanes Flores?
Yes.
So, but we can definitely add a marker there, yep.
Additional questions on these profiles? Thank you again for putting these together to the team, as Ms. Russell stated.
Okay, if you are ready to shift, we can shift to department budgets. We did provide all of the individual department budgets. And then we did provide a sheet, I'm navigating between the two. And Dr. Nguyen, I did receive your questions this morning. One of them, the one around the revenue neutral rate, we didn't have that information, I mean, around the mill levy. We didn't have that information until the 20 last week. So it actually was updated in the agenda this morning, is that correct, Ms. Kaiser? So it was updated in the agenda this morning. And then the three-year unspent component. I don't know if we have that, but we just had the three-year, the last three years.
And thank you, I did just. And, and thank you, I did just send it. The point of it being to, if, if, if a, and I've had this conversation with you. If there, let's start over like this. We already know in a positive sense, there is, there are additional funds put in the budgets as a security. I'm, I'm choosing my words. However, if there are too many additional funds put in certain budgets, then in my opinion, those funds do not, that, that same level of funding should not repeat year after year. Second point, if a, if one budget is, as you find that is, is, there was not enough money in there and it overspent, where did you get those dollars from? Technically, one would think you still are restricted to that budget that you approved that year. So are, so if someone had unspent funds and someone had spent more than budgeted, some funds can be transferred. Is that where you get it? I mean, it's just, it's just clarification of the budget process and are, but the point is very clear. I've never been shy to point out that, and I asked this very early in this process. If we don't do anything, the fact that the UG's appraisals have gone up will increase taxes. I don't know if everybody understands that, but that's, that's just the, the, the way it is. So if there's areas that, and I've said this a hundred times before, if there's areas that we can decrease spending to keep at a level that the taxes will not increase, and I don't buy that, well, it only increases you a hundred dollars a year. That's a hundred dollars, multiplied by sixty thousand households. So that, that's, that's the question I've always been asking. And so I understand about the mill levy, but then I have some specific questions about the department budget. So that was the, the context of that email that I just sat here and sent it, so it may have a nine o'clock timestamp on it.
Yes, so I did share it with Ms. Kaiser and Mr. Lilly. And you're, so are you wanting a response to your question so that everybody's on the same page? If we, if, if the assessed valuation goes up, but we hold our budget to whatever it was the previous year, that the taxes to the community members would stay the same, is that?
It will not stay the same.
Okay. So I'm not, Ms. Kaiser, Mr. Lilly, do you, you all, and I'm the, I didn't, I don't, can you restate your question so I can make sure I'm understanding in regards to that portion about us decreasing our budget?
Ms. Kaiser, is our, is our percentage of a taxpayer's dollar thirty-seven percent after you add up everything else?
Thirty-seven percent.
That's what was stated at, at a public meeting on the budget. Yes or no? I mean, Rachel was there, Ms. Russell was there.
What percent of our budget comes from, it is the thirty-seven percent?
From local taxpayers.
From local taxpayers.
Oh, you, so you didn't understand my question, but you're understanding the way she phrased it? Is that what's going on here?
Um, I wasn't understanding what you were referring to. So yes, local taxes, four percent.
That's a different question. Those are two different questions. Dr. Nguyen's question was different than Ms. Russell's question.
But she's reflecting on the meeting where we talked about, where the city talked about their taxes.
Trying to make sure that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm trying to make sure we're on the same page.
What is the percentage of our, what is the percentage of the taxpayer's dollar comes from USD five hundred with all the additional taxing entities included?
She, she's asking about the property taxes compared to the UG government and the other taxing needs to take the property tax bill. Is that right?
The dollar that they show.
Right.
Is that what she's referring?
I'm just trying to make sure you get my answer. That's all.
Is the dollar, so just so we're on page, when they, when that information comes out and it's that dollar and it was like, this is this, this is public schools, this is case.
UGE, that's the county, that's the city.
Yes.
I don't have that document. I know that what you're referring to now where it's that dollar and shows, but I don't know that number off the end.
Okay. Well, for discussion purposes, at a public UG meeting, they said it was thirty-seven percent. So would that mean out of every dollar you, the, you, the USD five hundred gets thirty-seven cents?
If that is the correct percentage.
Okay.
Yes.
What I'm saying is that even if we don't spend an additional penny, if our budget stays flat and your assessed valuation has gone up by the UG, that thirty-seven percent please will yield more money than it did this year. Is that correct?
If we maintain the same mill levy, that is correct.
If it's maintain the same mill levy, what about if you maintain the same budget number?
That would be where the revenue neutral rate comes in. Um, if you could refer to that slide, I'm not sure if I can get it up here.
Please don't complicate it. It, it, could you, could you answer simply if you stayed the budget at one dollar, would that still be thirty-seven percent? Because right now, I'm paying one dollar.
Right.
But if the UG raised my taxes, my taxes end up as two dollars. I'm still us. We don't raise anything. We don't change a dime. We're still at thirty-seven percent, correct?
Correct, if you maintain the same.
And I'm, I'm not trying to trick you. I'm just trying to, for clarification. Then, and what I'm saying then, that the taxpayer is still going to pay more because we don't have any control over the UG's appraised value. So that is what I said. That's not what I asked. That's what I said. Dr. Doublefield. Okay, now, what, what were you saying? You need clarification on the written request?
No, I was saying on what you were asking here publicly, I was making sure that I understood it. And I think now we're all on the same page regarding that question, but it, um, so I just want to be clear, your request around if we decrease our budget or hold our budget the same, what is the impact or is that a goal that we're moving towards or are you just asking?
If we hold our budget the same, I know what the impact is. The taxpayer's tax will go up. However, if there are certain budgets that they did not spend, that we could reduce our budget so that the tax levy is the same as this year, how does that look? That's why I called an alternative proposal. That's not the, the, that's not the, I don't believe that's the road you're going down. I don't believe that's the road because we have increases here, increases there, increases there. And I may be incorrect, but I don't believe that's the road you're going down as you build the budget current. I asked for, could we consider an alternative budget where you're making some reductions to lower the total amount so that the tax rate, the, not the rate, the tax levy, the tax amount is flat?
And so, Ms. Kaiser, I'm going, so no, we have not looked at holding or decreasing.
That hasn't been your frame of reference as you're building your, your budget.
No, and I, and I will say this publicly, if that is the direction that the board would tell us, we would do that on the front end.
And, and we understand that because you just mentioned last year, maybe we'll say we'll have a two percent cut or a five percent cut and you know in front.
Yes.
But again, we need to, we as a board need to know a lot more about departments and what they need and what's good for student achievement before we can say that. And that's, that's been my position all along, not to just say, well, we're just going to take a ten percent cut. That's irresponsible. So that's what I'm saying, with them looking at departments that have not used money consistently, departments that maybe have increased because student needs have increased. You know, this year is different than last, last year. And that's all I'm, I'm asking, can we consider now whether or not the board wants it or not? The point is, there are ways to at least keep the tax flat.
Correct. So what I'm, I'm not speaking to the tax board, but I'm speaking on budget decisions. If we are doing that, we need that direction in August to plan when we bring it. Because then we can, that's the direction of the board, because right now, let's say, we do present that. The alternatives of what we are either reducing or cutting and are eliminating, it's challenging to do, seeming like we've rolled over contracts, we have higher staff and allocated staff. And those big budget items are really people and big contracts. So if that is something, if that's the goal of the board or the will of the board, we need to know that like September, honestly.
Exactly. And, and I don't have a challenge with the, with your response, but the response that you have framed it as, it would then cost jobs. That is not the, the, the position that it was presented. Because those big ticket items are constant. Those big ticket items are always increasing. We all know that. So, and, and it also is a reminder, we, you say August, we've always said January. We need to start this process earlier.
Yeah, well, so I just want to be clear, I'm not saying it'll necessarily mean people's jobs. Like if you look, we have tons of positions that are open. So when we're evaluating and looking at the ROI and looking at the impact on student achievement, it could, we could have positions that may or may not be contributing to that. So I don't want to just say flatly.
Exactly.
That we would do that, but that is, those are the kind of conversa, I mean, those are the things. And, and honestly, those are the things that as we build out the building profiles, as we evaluate the department budget, those, we're starting to put those systems in place. So when we are either bringing back renewals, in some cases, we have throughout the year saying, well, this wasn't used, so we're not going to continue this, but we have, are reallocating the money to do X. So once the money is reallocated, it is not available. But if we're going to start saying, if we're not doing this, before we reallocate it, we would, and if we know on the front end, this is the larger goal of the board to hold it or decrease it, it would change how we navigate. Because when we're reallocating, we're reallocating to get to the outcomes that, to improve student.
And that's number one in all, and, and I've never
Oh, correct.
changed that. So, so that's, that's plastered all over the place, number one. And, and again, those high-ticket areas of, of employment, of certain minimum demands are always constant. But, but this is what I, I've said for two or three years. We, in my opinion, we need to have those discussions as we go along.
Oh, absolutely.
Because even with, and, and we'll have these discussions later with, with certain staffing, that, that we're at a certain point, and again, it, it, it comes across as, you know, doc, and this is, this is the rhetoric that will go out of, out on the airwaves. Dr. Nguyen wants to fire people or restrict X or cut that, and I just laugh. Because if you hear me consistently for two or three years, I've said, I want to keep the taxes low, not increase, and, and the, the, we haven't had the, the proper discussions to have any consideration. And that's all I'll say, any consideration. So, so thank you and, and we'll get to the department.
So, um, I, at this point, I mean, I heard the questions about that. You have the department budgets. Ms. Kaiser, it may be helpful, I know you were sitting there, you just sit down. She did, um, Mr. Lilly, Ms. Kaiser and others attended the budget meeting. So this may be a good point to provide an update there unless there are more questions around the department budgets. I will say that the department budgets reflect, um, some of them didn't change, some of them went up. Um, a couple of them that I will highlight that there were increases. Um, you know, all of the additional safety and security measurements that we put in place, we had to like incorporate that in the budget because some of those decisions were made mid-year and throughout as things came up. Our, if you look at our health services nursing budget, if you were to look at it over the course of the last two to three years, it has increased. Um, some, some of it coming out of the pandemic, we, obviously it's increased, but we also have to bring it back into what's actually within the budget unless we are going to add components to that. There were lots of grants and things that supported additional health service staff that as those things roll off and expire, like in every department, we're having to come back into what's actually affordable. And this year is when, when we'll start having the conversations about the things that we added with S R dollars that we do see positive impact for student achievement and/or other areas. We're going to have to figure out either A, what we're going to stop doing to pay for, well, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to stop doing to pay for it because we don't have money coming in to just continue all of those things. So a lot of the things that were not one-time costs that we did add with S R dollars will end unless we are stopping something else to pay for it. And those are the conversations that we've talked to departments and staff that we said we will start having in September so that when we get to the budget, department budgets and those recommendations early spring next year, all of that, all those things are flushed out.
Mr. Lopez, I just wanted to say, we have, when we've been in our goal session with Marcia, talked about and consistently said that we need to be fiscally responsible. And I think that's going back to what Dr. Nguyen is talking about, that we, yes, we have a budget. We want to stay within that, make the necessary adjustments, but we also want to make sure we take care of our kids academically, emotionally, physically, the whole bit. But we have talked, it's not like we never said we wanted to, we want to be fiscally responsible. We've said that and we just need to make sure we're all on the same ship with that. This is nothing new. It has been said.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Page. No, I completely agree. I mean, I think that's one of our three goals that the board has set as our, again, one of the three goals around being fiscally responsible and one of our priorities that we all looked at over the weekend as well. So completely agree, and that's, I think that's been a constant theme throughout, at least since I've been on the board, just around being fiscally responsible and what does that look like? And attaching that to Dr. Nguyen's point around student achievement, making sure we're doing what we can to increase that. I think there are, it, there's just, this process continues to evolve, right? As we continue to gather more information and look at different data points, um, you know, like the building profiles, I think will continue to help. So through these conversations and the assessments and the, the department budgets, continuing to have conversations about what we need and what, what information we as a board need in order to make those decisions is helpful to have. But I do also recognize that, you know, staff does go through the process of looking at their, whether it's their building budgets or their department budgets and having those conversations at those levels and then with their leadership teams as well to say, hey, this is why we're increasing this budget item or why we're increasing this department budget or decreasing this department budget. So, so I do recognize that that does happen. And so I think part of the request is also just to make sure that the board is informed when those conversations happen. But I, I do recognize and know that those conversations do happen at building levels, department levels and with the leadership team when they're going through building those department and building budgets. So, um, so I just wanted to share that, that perspective as well, is that those conversations do happen. I think it's just making sure that those are lifted up when we're having these discussions at the board level. But you're absolutely right, being fiscally responsible is one of our goals and, and part of our work as, as a board. Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great conversation.
Yeah, I think that's a great conversation to have. However, I also, every time we have a workshop or we go to a conference, they talk about the importance of how our budget is a reflection about the things we care about. And it's concerning to me when I see what I hear the community talk about or I, when we talk about athletics or we, I've heard board members talk about health services and I've heard folks talk about the importance of fine arts and PE and music. Yet those unfortunately are always the first things that are getting lower. We saw an increase and then we saw a decrease. Like, that's where I also am just trying to figure out what our role is. We go through this priority setting where we said multilingual education and services was important, but then we're decreasing that while starting a new program. So then in the future, can I expect it to be increased? And so, so I'm trying to also manage those expectations of, we set priorities. It sounds like budgets have already been set. We just, we're not even finished setting our priorities. Budgets are already decided upon. So then how do we true, how are we truly able to lean into the expectations that we have in this process? If budgets are already set, people have already been told what the money is gonna be. Jobs have already been created, which I think goes back to Dr. Nguyen's point around starting this process earlier. Because right now, I feel like I'm just looking at numbers and all this information without actually an opportunity to be engaged in the process. So if I hear someone, the complaints I forward to staff all year long are around our students having the proper uniforms or, but I don't ever get an opportunity in the budget to like say, hey, the athletic department, how do we make that process faster? Like, I understand the timeline, but how do I get the opportunity to say, this timeline makes sense, but I think we need to expedite it because our community wants to see their taxpayers, their dollars at work. And at work means that everyone has the proper uniforms or that our facilities look better than they look. And so I think, yes, being fiscally responsible, but then also managing the expectations that our constituents also have for us in this process. And I can't look at them and say, oh, well, that's gonna be better because they've put more dollars into that. So.
So a couple.
Sorry, that was a lot of things.
No, no, and that's very helpful. So to your point around things like that, we can make that happen now, but that's what we would need to hear. So there are spaces that we can, like if, if that is a gap, sometimes it's not a gap, it's how the money was spent previously. So when we look at the athletic budget and we look at the rotation and we are saying there's a greater need, we can look at the overall budget and say, we're not gonna do, we can prioritize that over something else. So those kind of things can happen and we can make it happen. And a primary example is mid-year when we talked about adding additional either officers or those things happened in the moment and we adjusted it. And now this year's budget reflected it. So that meant that the money like was coming, like something else didn't happen and/or that something was budgeted and neither came in under or over or we didn't need it. So to your point around that, as the new athletic director comes on board and he looks at it, there is some wiggle room and we would bring it back. Because there may be something in the budget now that we're saying, this is a line item. And he may say, well, I want to shift that and do that. So similar to within your board budget, he may be able to adjust it within his own budget and/or we'll have conversations about allocating it from somewhere else. And depending on the type of uniform, I know band uniforms, that comes out of like capital outlay and those kind of things. So those larger conversations, if we, when we know about them, and we do know about them and the new district athletic director is aware. So as he comes on board, he'll come in and he'll look at the budget and the things that we need to prioritize, we will. While the budgets are set, where we're kind of tight is staffing positions that I've already rolled over through the continuing contract process. We can't really do anything about those. But there, that's why we're having the conversation now. Because unless it's something hugely expensive, within every department's budget, they have some flexibility to prioritize or to say to the board, if we do this, this is not gonna happen, or we're not gonna do this in order to make this happen, or that's more of a long-range project. I was saying the overarching, like decreasing the budget is a larger conversation than prioritizing within each department budgets, those immediate needs and evaluating if those things are done. I can say, based off the feedback that's come from the board and the community throughout the year, that's how the department leaders prioritize things in their budget. The multilingual budget, for example, this year it may have gone down because we are using ESAR dollars to pay for a lot of the things. And then as we look at like the PSYOP training and all of that, we'll build it into next year's budget. So some of the things, some of the budgets that may have gone down is because we have one more year of ESAR dollars and then we'll make the proper adjustments. Because some of them are one-time costs, so they'll not need to be in their budget. But if they're not a one-time cost, a cost, we'll build it into the budget in the future.
Okay. And only because you picked on health services. When we talk about being fiscally responsible and we talk about the amount of dollars that we spend on contracts related to health services, I will add this to the parking lot for another conversation. We really have to look at the contracts and how much are we actually even saving money? Because we are paying other people high-cost rate dollars versus actually increasing the health services budget and how we pay people. So I will put a parking lot pin in it, but if we're saying that we need to make health services more affordable, well, we also need to not be paying other people almost two and a half times what we pay our hourly staff to contract services. That's all I'm gonna say.
And I actually do have, because we've had this conversation.
We have.
And during the pandemic, there were additional dollars that you can leverage from ESAR to allow us to fill that need. I will tell you, we have said to health services that the contract, similar to proximity in all of our contracted services, is not gonna be a one-to-one because we don't, for those areas that qualify for the ESAR dollars uniquely, we won't, we don't have that money. So it has to be, so for example, for proximity, if you have five teacher openings, what you can afford is two, three, two, three sections. So building principles are in the process of doing that. So we are bringing it as we exit ESAR back into that. Help, the nursing contract is covered under the negotiated agreement. And so you, unless there's some things that are happening at the negotiations table to create a separate scale, their scale is based off of, correct me if I'm wrong, is the teacher scale, all certified employees. So if that is something.
And three years ago, this board said they wanted to look at what it looks like to move it away because of the nature of the job. And I know I said I wanted to parking lot this, but also we have to think about the world of healthcare and what it is now. And if we are setting ourselves up for success because we have other big players in our community who offer so much more. And so we have to take not only inflation, the network of where healthcare is now and the need for individuals to also reflect if what our values were before, and I'm not saying teachers and nurses are different, but also we have to take the landscape into an account as well. So.
And we did adjust that last year in the contract.
Okay. Thank you.
But could I ask, could you define parking lot? And do we have a parking lot for this budget?
I can't define parking lot, but I don't want to take up all of the time today trying to.
Well, when you use that phrase, if people don't know what you're talking about.
So I, when I say parking lot, I'm saying that I hope that we can prioritize this conversation specifically around nurses and health services in another meeting outside of the meeting today. And I have put it in my notes to follow up to say, hey, when can we have this conversation? So I can better gauge where the entire board is. I'm willing to do the work to figure out a separate scale, but it would be pointless for me to do that if everyone's not on board with that.
And I guess, Dr. Steverfield, my question is, do we have a parking lot for this budget?
I have a list here, but, and I would need direction from Greg. I think that is something we would have to notice and negotiate it because they're under the negotiated agreement. There were some parts that got addressed in last year's contract, correct? Is that what you just said, Greg? Yeah. So there were some components that did by allowing us to add CNAs. I may be misspeaking and some other things. The larger conversation around that, which I have on the parking lot, is just based off how you staff. Because typically, you don't necessarily have a nurse in every building. There may be a nurse supporting two buildings. But if the goal is to have a nurse in every building, that's a completely different staffing model than most school districts. So that larger conversation, and that's where we would need Ms. Lewis and her team but to look at like what it means. Because you can have, so you can have structures in place that does not necessarily mean that there is a licensed nurse in the building the entire day. Because different sizes, different needs of students. You'll have a health person in the building, but that's where the, like, what are the larger goals? So I do have that. I do think it's a larger conversation that can help provide direction, you know, as we come out of this last year where we do have some ESAR funds to support this year. Like, what are the priorities and what does that look like for that? My parking lot, Dr. Nguyen, I have some notes here. I do know that also staff, when it's about their department, they are writing it. But the ones that I'm saying is a larger conversation, it'll be next year's budget. That's when finance committee and/or other departments that are impacted, we can make sure that we put them.
But some of the smaller items, we can put in the parking lot to discuss during this budget cycle, is that?
Yes. And today, the smaller items, yes. But the nursing one is a larger one that will be outside. So that's how I received it from.
Just again, for public, you're talking parking lot, we know parking lot. You putting it out there in the front or on the side? But no. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lopez, I agree with Ms. Russell that we need to do something about our nursing. Because in the past, I taught for 30 years, and it irked me to know in that the secretaries were the nurses. Now, we've done a little bit better, but because of the current budget right now, it seems like we're regressing, we're going backwards. And if we really say we're concerned about the whole child, then we need to make sure that we have people who are supposed to be providing assistance to these kids when they're sick. It's not the secretary, because then it becomes more of a legal issue too. If you do something wrong, now we got another lawsuit. And we don't want that. And we need to make sure that we don't put our health department in a bad situation. And I'm not saying, I don't know, I'm just waiting to see how this all rolls out. It doesn't look good.
So that's not what we're doing. There'll be a health official, not the secretary. There would be, like, they are in the process of, most district has HOA, which is a health officer person that is in the building when the nurse is not there. And the nurses are in the building a certain number of days. So we're not regressing back to that. But the other reality of it, which Rachel spoke to, is even when we allocated all of the positions, we never filled them all. So then we were paying millions of dollars, when you look at, to these contracted services that we can't afford. Like, we, unless, you know, it's not like it's a couple of thousand or a couple. So the conversation we've had with all of our contracted services is, you need to look at a one-to-one. So if we pay a teacher, the average cost for a teacher is $65,000. That's what you, when you're doing, that's how much FTE you can afford when we do the contracted services. And that's not gonna be a one-to-one, so we have to adjust the schedules accordingly. Same with nurses, same with any contracted services. And those are conversations, honestly, that I don't think we necessarily had in the past. But in order for us to not go over, because we'll hit a cliff. And so those are the things that we are tightening up and saying, you really have to look at it for what's allocated within the budget. So that's what we are doing. So there are things that you can do within the allocated budget to ensure that it's not the secretaries or someone else that are providing those health services. But the larger picture around like the compensation, if it needs to be different, that's like something that needs to go through the negotiated agreement side. And that's where the board, that's that parking lot conversation around those components. But the reality of, similar to teachers, we can allocate all day, we haven't been able to fill it.
I get that, but you mentioned an HO. What are the qualifications of this person that you say?
HOAs, they are typically CNAs. They have some sort, they're like specific backgrounds that may not be a nursing, but there are other layers of certifications that you have to have. They may be a CNA, they may be in, I may be messing this up, and I don't know if Tiffany's on there, LPN. There's different levels of types of health officials or people who have a nursing background where they can allocate meds, take blood pressure, like those kind of things. But they would still have a medical background. In some cases, they may have their paramedic certification. Like, those types of things are very different than a licensed nurse that has a bachelor's or those kind of things. So that.
And then for those special needs kids who may have some chronic issues, you wouldn't put that sort of individual with someone like that. Now, that's my concern, to make sure that we have the best. I get that, I understand that. I'm just saying we need to make sure that the kids are safe.
And I agree with you. And special ed has a whole different nursing budget for those specialized situations that is not a part of health services. And that is treated completely different. That's not in this, the health service, general nursing is for the general population. And for those special circumstances where somebody has a one-on-one nurse or somebody that has to be trained in feeding tubes, special ed takes care of that within their allocated budget. And they address that. That's not an issue. We're talking about the general support for all students.
Thank you. And I too look forward to that conversation. I think there's a lot of different models that we can use locally, nationally. We've got some great partners in the community that can really help us fill some of those voids. And I know Ms. Lewis is excited, she just walked in, about different ideas that we can look at when we're talking about health services and what that could look like for our district. So definitely excited to have that conversation. Ms. Kaiser, I hate to do this to you, but we're gonna take a quick break. If we can reconvene at 11 o'clock, and then we will start, I promise, right with you, Ms. Kaiser. So we'll take a quick break, a quick recess. Thank you. All right, we will go ahead and get started again. Thank you for that quick break. Ms. Kaiser, thank you for being flexible. So what, like I said, we will start with you on board, just to kind of level set. So Ms. Kaiser has a quick presentation. She's going to give us some updated information, and then we'll also have time, in case there were specific department questions that folks wanted to have, but we'll have Ms. Kaiser kind of give her presentation. You have the PowerPoint, but we'll have time for those department questions. Then we'll roll into potentially our board budget as well to cover that, but just so we kind of know what's to come in this conversation. But first, we'll allow, and thank you, Ms. Kaiser, for your patience, and thanks for your work in preparing all of this, and I'll hand it off to you.
Sure, thank you. So the presentation that is attached to the agenda is the same. So if we could start on page 15 here, this was the last slide that we left with, showing the area district mill levies, and then the question was asked, what does that really mean in dollars? So I went through the same order, starting with Olathe down to KCK. So this is what it equates to in dollars. So you can see the large variations between the districts on what they actually collect per mill. And then on page 17 is the actual dollar amount per mill. So Shawnee Mission collects over 4.8 million, Blue Valley 3.8, we're 917,000, down to Turner's 178,000. So that might put a little bit more perspective of what a mill actually means and the dollar amounts it generates for the area districts.
Can you slow down real quick, so I can make sure I'm following you correctly? So on 15, or 16, starting at 16, it says, so we currently collect 45 million-ish dollars from the mill levy. Is that what that's saying? And these are the different interest groups that we utilize that in?
Correct.
Moving to 17, one mill in KCKPS equates to 917-ish dollars.
Correct, 917,000.
100, so, thank you.
Uh-huh, sure, yep, yep.
However, going back to, how many actual mills we currently have? I guess I could do the math.
On, on page 15, I don't have the exact numbers on there, but you can kind of tell from the scale that Olathe is about 68 mills, and we are about 49 mills.
Thank you, because I saw that as a comma on the side and not a dot. So thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on that? Okay, so I just wanted to go back to our timeline. So we did attend the KSDE Budget Workshop last Thursday, and they are saying that we should be receiving the actual budget document towards the end of this week, beginning of next. So we have not even, you know, been able to start that actual process yet until they get the budget document to us. And then we'll talk about the revenue neutral rate here on the other slide, but just wanted to go back to the timeline then. So we have to submit whether or not we're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate on July 20th. So we would ask that you decide to approve or not approve that on the July 18th board meeting, because that will shift our entire timeline of when the budget has to be submitted. So it'll be between August 25th and September 20th, depending on if we exceed the revenue neutral rate or not. And so this is the information that I just received from the county clerk last week, talking about, the first column is showing what our current 2023 mill rate was, a total excluding a general fund, which is always by statute 20 mills. So our 2023 mill rate was 29.66, and the revenue neutral rate is 25.53 mills. So if we were going to collect the exact same dollar amount next year as we did this year, it would lower the mill levy by 4.12 mills. So I would collect the exact same dollar amount. If we leave the mill levy the same, then that would bring in another 3.7 million in estimated local revenue, 2.9 million in state aid, and it would cost the median homeowner $4.45 a month, which is $53.40 a year. So by acknowledging to the county clerk that we are going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, if that's what the board decides, that would give us the maximum that we can ask for. So as we go through the budget process, if the board says, you know, we only want to keep it halfway in between there, we want to collect half the tax dollars, but lower the mill levy, if that would be your decision, that can be done up until we actually submit the budget document. So this is just locking in the maximum. What the county clerks and KSDE recommended last week, just so you all know, is whatever we put in as the maximum for our mill levy, right now, we only have estimates. We won't know the true valuation until November. So whatever we put in at the maximum, if the valuations would go down based on the estimated to the actual, we would collect less tax dollars based on that. So that's just one thing to know. As we put in the maximum, it really comes down to what the final actual tax rate is in November. What questions can I answer?
When can we get a copy of that?
It is attached to the agenda.
Well, I got 18, but it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is a separate attachment.
Oh, okay.
I apologize, and we just got that to you this morning. I'm sorry it's late, but I was waiting on information from the county clerk last week. We did have an error on our form, and then also, once we talked to KSDE on Thursday.
So could you repeat what you just said? Could you explain this chart one more time, please?
Absolutely. So if we keep the tax dollars the same as we did in 2023, then it would lower the mill rate by 4.12 mills, and we would collect the same amount of tax dollars.
And would that mean you do? What is, what is that? What is then the statement you would have concerning the revenue neutral rate?
We would not be exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
And if you wanted to?
Right, if we exceeded the revenue neutral rate, it would be up to 4.12 mills, that would be the board's decision, which would generate 3.7 million in local funding, 2.9 million in state aid, and would cost a median homeowner in our district $4.45 a month, or $53.40 a year if we did the maximum and we left the mill rate at 29.66.
And why is, why is the line supplemental general underlined?
Just as a total, it's the three, bond and interest, capital outlay and supplemental general, those three, in the first column on the left, equal 29.66.
And do you have the figure for if you do? And do you have the figure for if you do not increase the revenue neutral rate? I'm looking, which, do you have a figure?
If we do not exceed the revenue neutral rate, it will be the exact same dollar amount we collected this year.
But you don't, but it is not reflected in this slide?
Right, I do not have that. I could get that put together for you.
Hmm. I think that would be important to...
Actually, let me check really quick. I think I do have that over on the revenue here on the other slide. So that would be part of our operating revenue. So, yeah, I mean, I could figure it out. It would be 14 million for LOB.
Did you put in the same format as this?
Yeah, absolutely.
It does give the impression that there's only one, one, one track that you're thinking. It gives an impression. I didn't say you are, but...
Yeah, but just to point out, yeah, and we can, and we do this frequently when we actually bring you the full budget. We do move mills between funds if we need a larger, a bond payment one year. We will only be lower supplemental general. So for example, here, capital outlay is eight mills. If we remain revenue neutral and do not exceed it, we would only collect 6.89 mills in capital outlay. So that would be reducing our capital outlay by almost $2 million, 1.8 million. So we could shift those mills between them, so we would collect a capital outlay if you would prefer that over having an operating, like in supplemental general, that we can use for salaries and those kinds of things. So that would just be a recommendation we would bring to you. Once we kind of get your feel on what you guys would like to do with the revenue neutral rate, then, once we put everything in the budget document, we would come with a recommendation of if we want to keep capital outlay at eight, then this is how it would look. And we work with bond counsel also to make sure we have enough, we're collecting enough in bond and interest to make our payments.
Ms. Kaiser, I did get a question, and I don't know if you actually have it. Is there a certain percentage, like when you do the revenue neutral rate, that's not taxed, or is it taxed regardless if your home is 10,000, 25,000, or a million dollars? Like, does the, so you said the average, the medium home value is 116, and so for somebody whose home is that amount, it's an additional $4.45. If my home is 50,000, is it just prorated, or is there a minimum threshold?
For bond and interest, capital outlay, and supplemental general...
The revenue neutral, okay.
Those three funds would be, so if it were, if your home value was half of 116,000, then your increase would be half of $4.45. General fund, just a reminder, the first 40,000 of your home value is not taxed for general funds. So that's why I wanted to separate that out. So if you had a $50,000 home, only, well, I guess the 50,000 would still be on those three. I'm sorry, maybe I'm making that more confusing, but, but the, for general fund, the first 40,000 is not taxable.
Okay. I got that question, and I did not have it, so I said it...
Yeah, so it is proportionate. So if you doubled, your home value was double 116,000, it would be twice of 4.45 a month.
So, the 40,000, it only applies to the state 20 mil?
Correct.
It doesn't apply to the other three?
Correct.
Okay. So the $50,000 house, first three pay full, that, for the general fund, you'd only pay on the 10,000 between the 40 and the $50,000.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and that is state statute that requires us to charge the 20, that they actually collect the 20 mills.
Okay.
Additional questions for Ms. Kaiser?
I don't have a question, just a statement. When you showed all the other exists, Shawnee Mission, Blue Valley, all that, for those of us who live in Wyandotte County, we don't have that kind of income in this area, that I just hope we look at that and not add other burdens to the people who live here, who do pay taxes. And I'm one of those people, and I, you know, the value rate that they put on some of the stuff that we have is ridiculous. It's unbelievable. So I just think we need to keep it the way it is, to help the people who live here, who are struggling, trying to make ends meet.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kaiser, for the information. Board, if you have additional questions, please make sure you send that. And then there was a request, and it fits helpful for the full board to have the same type of slide that you presented with showing the, if we did not exceed the revenue neutral, if we could have that, and you can send that to Ms. Smith, and then we can get that to the full board. Thank you.
And Board, I'm just asking before we pivot to your budget, are there any between now and July 18th, because that's when you'll make the decision around the revenue neutral rate? Is there any specific information that you, because we don't have another special meeting scheduled unless you choose to do that, or the, outside of the things that we discussed regarding the building profiles, specific things around the department budgets? And we said we'll get the building budget individuals. Are there specific things that you need or questions that you may have around department and building budgets?
Yes, Dr. Wayne.
I'll just start with the first one, under purchasing. What is a professional? I know what administrator is, I know what secretary is. What's a professional?
Ms. Kaiser is coming forward.
The professional in purchasing would be considered the assistant director, our procurement specialists, and our accounts payable clerks.
Okay. So, and then, looking at that just one budget, is that a, how much is, how much is the increase from 23, 22, 23, 23, 24?
It looks like it's about 40,000 total. Are you talking about just the salaries?
No, no.
I'm sorry, I'm not on the...
Yeah, you're good, on the total. And, okay, so those are just, those are thousands. And how are, how are those, how does the increase figure? I guess, Dr. Stubblefield, thank you, Ms. Kaiser.
The increase, the...
Salary.
The salaries is based off of the proposal that we actually will, the board has seen. I don't know if they had additional, an additional person added, Ms. Kaiser, is that? I don't know if there was an unfilled position, like, that's where, because it falls under, I mean, that bump up includes all of the insurance and all of those things, but I don't know if there was an unfilled position or a change in somebody that led to the larger...
There was not. We did not increase anybody in that department. Sometimes, though, we do find that maybe we budgeted for a partial year salary last year because we knew we didn't have someone, so that could be the, could help impact the increase, but we did not increase personnel in purchasing or the print shop.
And this is, this is even with our budget. What is the large increase in printing and copying? This is like $40,000 increase?
In printing and copying? That was actually a change that we made. It was included in the chief operations officer, and so that was in that budget. And when we looked at it, we decided it was better to put it actually under the print shop so we could track that better. So that would be any printing costs they have, and then they also get reimbursed from the schools and departments who order those items as well, banners and things like that.
So this is, this is, this includes other, and it's just put into this department?
Right. We do that typically as we correct through the year. You know, we'll really, we'll say, well, this really should be, would be better for tracking purposes to have it in this budget or thing. So we make those changes, you know, every year as we, we always clean up the budgets.
And so that money would not be new money, but reallocated from another area?
Right, right. Yeah, for example, student services, Dr. Wilson wanted to make some changes to that, so you'll see that there maybe wasn't a budget for the last three years. Student services went down, but the director of his department, that we have a budget for them also now. Like, as we did nursing, we, you know, a couple of years ago, we broke that out specifically to nursing because it was included in different budgets.
Thank you, thank you. I'll just direct questions to you from, not to deal with the day by departments. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions?
So I just had a couple of questions about specific items that I didn't, I couldn't find, so such as graduation, so one of them is graduation cost. I couldn't find whose budget it actually was in. I know that we're going to have a bigger conversation about graduation, but where, if the board chooses to go to either direction, where that cost comes from? Does it come from pulling back of having so many police on staff during that event? Does it come out of the chief's budget? Does it come out of student services? But I didn't see it in there. And then I also just, as we talk about celebrations, did we have a commitment from the foundation to continue to fund the student celebrations? Or did we also need to make sure that that was in our budget? I found those to be really great opportunities to celebrate our students and the achievements, and so I just wanted to make sure those two celebrations are...
So the student, the foundation has made a commitment and actually has like a bank that funds...
Capital federal.
Capital federal. So that will be ongoing, and we're planning for that. Graduation, come on up, Mr. Burt, I believe, is it in your budget?
It's in my budget this year, but next year is going to that.
Shift into student services, yeah. So they, that budget line item, it's allocated over there. So it's in the budget.
Okay. I will look at that, and then I'll follow up with you if I have any additional. Thank you.
Thank you. If, if there are no other questions or information that you requested prior to the July, other than what you've shared about the updates around building, building profiles and those things for the July 8, we'll plan to have those things prior to the July 18th meeting. And I will hand it off to Mr. Lopez for you all to discuss your budget. I will say, although it's not on there because it's a part of the budget, we will, are asking for 15 minutes for, is it 15, Greg?
10 or 15.
To provide an update on negotiations as a part of this meeting, because that's a part of the budget.
Do we have the public library budget in this department?
No, that, is it in there?
There is a library.
It's like R E S P 70. It's right after the chief of police budget.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I have a question about security, the police budget. Do we have enough? You know, we have voted in the past, and then we find out, it wasn't said then, I didn't ask the question because I made the motion, that we add more security at Wyandotte, and I want to say it was Washington, I can't remember the other school. And we vote, and then we find out they hadn't been trained, there's more to it. I thought it was something that was going to take place sooner. So what is our current status on security? Do we have enough?
We have enough, we have enough FTE allocated. The gap is actually filling it, I, and we have provided like throughout the year an update at the end of the week on where we are staffing, because you, unfortunately, it's just not a quick turnaround. So I believe going into this year, we are closer to being fully staffed. When we weren't fully staffed, in order to ensure that we have security and police presence on all of our campuses, it was spread out versus prioritizing Wyandotte over another bill, like pulling from another building to have more at Wyandotte. The FTE is there and is allocated, it's a matter of filling up positions. And the training and the academies take a while, unfortunately, so it takes a while to get to that status and point.
And for the SROs, what kind of training, and how long does it take to train them?
The SROs and police officers are the same. It's the security people that we can hire on the spot, that you, the training, we provide all the training. But if you are a police officer, that's where you have to go to the academy. And if you are secure, the SSAs, we can hire them on the spot, and we provide the training to them.
And when you say closer, what does closer mean?
I don't have it in front of me, but the last...
Chief Nicholson is on the line. He might be...
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry, I missed the last part of that question. What, what number is it that we're looking for? I can pull up any documentation, but I think I can answer most questions on the fly.
So the question...
No, go ahead, Ms. Russell.
Nope, I was just going to say the question was, how close are we to having all the positions filled? Ms. Page, I was going to note on 512 and Dr. Stubblefield's end of the week, it stated that all the positions were filled. There was one person waiting to finish up the academy, and so I don't, but I don't know if in that suggestion it was covering the SRO or SSA.
I read that, but somebody, again, hearsay, I just wanted to make sure that it was correct, and I heard it correctly because people were concerned. So when we say closer, what does that mean?
I can answer that question. We have all of our, I'm sorry, I apologize. We have all of our police officer positions filled. We have one person that's currently at the law enforcement academy, and he graduates actually this week, June 30th. And we have two officers that were hired that will need to go to the police academy. They were not certified. One of those was a former SSA, and one of those is a person that we hired from the outside. And both those young ladies need to go to the academy, and their dates are yet to be scheduled. So that also created two SSA vacancies, which we made a job offer just last week, and we have one other pending. So we will be fully staffed on SSA before school starts as well.
And did we set up, at one point, they said the security system, where they could go online and see? I know we're implementing the other thing with the press button and all that, forgot what you call it, but do we have that?
So we have all of the cameras at, well, the cameras at three high schools are connected to the door sensors. We have quotes given to us for the door sensors on two high schools where those were not in place. But even in those high schools, we have school safety associates that are able to monitor the doors without the benefit of the electronic notification.
And then what about the, I can't think of the word, but the security system where the kids come in? Have we worked that out better?
Metal detectors.
Yeah, the metal detectors where they're not just, I know at Wyandotte you pass by, you're trying to figure out what's going on. Do they all work? Metal detectors.
Yeah, so last year, we had a little bit of issue with our X-ray machines and a few metal detectors that weren't really up to speed, but we got them all working in all of our schools this year, throughout the year. And then I've met with Mr. Correll to make sure that our staff, our contracted people are going to make sure those are all up to date and ready to go by the time school starts. So we feel confident that all of our X-ray machines and all of our metal detectors will be completely 100% running by the time school starts.
Thank you.
That's a contracted service that we don't operate ourselves, but we have two vendors that we rely on to make those repairs for us.
This question for you, Dr. Stubblefield. Did we talk about vape detectors?
We did talk about vape detectors when we were talking about the money for the settlement, and I know that, that... And I know that, that, uh, Mr. Lilly and his team are looking at, um, getting those input. But that's not in the, that budget.
That'd be another budget.
So it was the money from the settlement and, um, Mr. Lilly, what budget would that become the settlement primarily?
We're still working on quotes on those, but it would be dependent on, I mean, I don't know how much we're getting out of that settlement still. It would probably be a capital outlay expense depending on what that, that difference is. But I would assume it would be, uh, large enough that it would probably be capital outlay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions on department budgets?
And for capital outlay, I know it's, I thought it's supposed to be on, on the next, uh, meeting, about Sumner Academy, what's going on with the, the field plumbing issue? We weren't gonna deal with that this year and it shouldn't be a part of the budget, I'm assuming. Because we haven't worked on anything and they're still trying to find out the answers.
So that is slated to be discussed July eighteenth in executive session?
Okay.
But you will be meet, meeting with the U G? You put that in your Friday report?
Yeah, they're getting information for, updated information from them that they have not. It, it's some challenges that are, I mean, some things happening in the background out of individual control. They, so between now and July eighteenth, we'll have an update on where we are, yeah.
When are you meeting with the U G?
I don't know the date. They're trying to set it up prior to that, yeah.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I just wanted to publicly get clarification that based on these things that are out of our control, more than likely, there will not be an update to the field by this upcoming school year. That is the question that has been asked and posed. But we do have a sense of urgency to finding the correct solution for this. Okay.
Absolutely.
I just wanna publicly clarify that that is our end goal, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Okay, if there are no other questions and if questions come up, please make sure you send those to Dr. Stubblefield and the team and we'll get responses to all the board. Um, we'll shift quickly to the board budget. Um, again, board, I sent you, um, a draft budget. You, you had, um, previous to that, you had the three-year kind of rolling budget that you could, could see. Thank you, Ms. Kaiser and Ms. Smith for pulling that together. And thank you, Ms. Smith, for pulling some information in order to, to put together the draft budget. Again, it's really simply just a draft. You, you'll see that there aren't too many changes to the current year budget, but it's a conversation for you all. This is our budget, um, and we can make adjustments as necessary. The really big shift, um, or I, I guess the, the one addition that is in the budget is our cube membership, which is not a huge amount, um, that we, that we voted to become members of Cube. So I added that into, um, the dues and fees category, which you'll see has increased from this current year's budget. But other than that, there really aren't a ton of shifts in the budget. Happy to talk through anything, if there, is there anything that we wanna add, remove, decrease? It's open to, to you all, Ms. Humphries and Ms. Russell and Ms. Page.
If I'm looking at this correctly, we have not paid our K A S B dues this year? We have a thirty-eight thousand dollar balance, is that correct?
I'm not sure the answer to that. I don't know if we can get the answer to that. And that, if Ms. Kaiser, Ms. Smith, if we know, have we paid our dues for K A S B? Not yet, okay. We have not. So that's probably what that, part of that number is.
Okay, we get, uh, clarification, not now, but when those dues are paid, you know, or they due July first, or they due December, or whatever. Because we had forty thousand dollars in that budget and we've got thirty-eight left.
And that was as of the beginning of May.
Right.
So there, there may be some shifts, but to your point, um, and if we can maybe get an updated, um, year-to-date balance and expenses.
And the other question is, uh, their food costs, have we gone a two thousand dollars over?
It would seem so. That's what's seen, shown on the budget.
Okay. So do we know why we went over? Do we have more, more special meetings or something like that? Just make sure that we budget correctly for the next year.
Yeah, and we did have several special meetings this year, including, um, the listening and learning sessions where we also had food and, um, wanted to, and we provided food and drinks or snacks.
That came out of our budget then?
I thought it did, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, to clarify that, yeah. It's not just food for board members?
No, no, no. It's, it's for some of those special, those listening and learning sessions and other, um, sessions that we've had as well. Additional questions? Ms. Russell?
Yeah. I don't wanna scrutinize anything, but I also wanna be cognizant that it, I think Janie is bringing up a very valid point. While we had snacks, because we had a buffet of, of Costco things, I'm still not clear where the two, the additional dollars are coming from. At our board retreat, we had Pizza Hut, which I think is also relatively inexpensive. And so I think some clarity around what is actually being charged and is it the right place? Similar to what Ms. Kaiser mentioned earlier, is, are the things being charged, are they appropriately belonging to the board? And should that be coming out of our budget? Things like the listening session, board retreat, board meeting meals, yes. But I have a little bit of concern because I'm not sure what, what extravagant meal we've had that would exceed our budget in that way. So that's that to her questions. I, I would like to also offer a suggested proposal or change to the budget, um, to lead by example, that we reduce the budget somewhere between seven and ten percent, with the majority of that coming out of legal. And I don't just, I'm not just picking legal or picking on Greg for the sake of picking on Greg. I looked at the three-year comparison. I think it's responsible enough that we can say we can lessen it. I will share my proposal of my suggested idea, is reducing legal services to three hundred thousand, increasing out-of-district travel to thirty thousand. I would like to have a conversation about what other expenses is. Over the last few years, it has been high, we lowered it. However, we still exceeded it. What is other expenses? I just highlighted that, sorry, that was a tangent. I did for secretaries, I took it to seventy-two thousand. Health insurance contributions, it was over the budget this year. So I think it's appropriate that we increase it to reflect what the expenses to date are at nine thousand. With those changes, I get us to a budget of four hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred and four dollars, with a reduction of forty-one thousand, seven, of roughly forty-two thousand, which is a reduction between seven and eight percent. As I mentioned, I wanted to lead by example. But I also think it's relative that we also, I would like to get a board discussion around board member salaries and/or stipend conversation. I think there is legislative, legislation, legis, you guys know what I'm saying? That allows for that. I would like to get an understanding of where the board is with that, as well as, um, the consultant fee that is currently listed as expended. It was refunded to us and so an understanding of how we have that as an expense, but actually our balance is eighty-seven fifty, based on the fact that we were refunded what we paid. So, um, and that was outlined in the, um, document that was previously sent. We had a balance returned to us from Dion. So those, that's all of the things I have.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Um, any thoughts or questions on, yes, Ms. Page?
Yeah, first question, who put this budget together? Because I don't think we did it as a collective group.
No, I was asked to put something together to send to the board. So I put this together based on information that Ms. Smith sent me on travel and other expenses and on expenses that were, um, that we've seen over the last few years. So in order for us to have a starting point in our conversation, I just drafted this based on the last three years' budget.
Okay, because I, I think it would be nice if we, as a group, could do that. That would save a little time. And then my second question is on miscellaneous consultant. I didn't know the, the Dion returned the money because I was gonna ask that. Did we get, because she only did part of the workshop. So that's refreshing to know that she gave it back. And who else and what other way, what other consultants do we need?
So yes, Ms., um, the one consultant, you're right, thank you, Ms. Russell. Ms. King did refund the money for the session that was not provided to the board, um, so that did come back. The other consultant, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Smith, is this where Dr. Weisman's, um, time comes out of when she does all of our board, board sessions?
Yes.
And the, the facilitators for the listening and learning, it's also in there? That, because there, there's a cost to the facilitators and that was charged to the board, yeah. So all of that is in there.
Okay, that, just wanted to know that. And then where it says, other expenses, what does that entail? Because you have it, I think, listed twice. So what do all these, what are some of these other expenses?
So that line item has always been in that, in the budget, um, and, um, we can, it's like Ms. Kaiser is coming to the microphone. And I think it just covers other expenses that aren't covered in any of those specific line items that are in the budget. And it has decreased over the last three years, but, um, opened a conversation if we need to change that or change that amount, Ms. Kaiser?
Yes, I can answer the other expenses. The one in the section, um, in the middle, under twenty-three nineteen, other board of education, those are actually, um, under the board, that's the way we have to code them. And that would be student hearings, um, let me see what else we had on there, sorry.
That wouldn't apply to student services?
Not if it's for the board. If you're having, it's, what we're charging there is employee hearings, student hearings. And then under the admin, one, under the other section would be Leslie's notary fee, board appreciation decorations and a funeral floral arrangement.
You would think employment, would that not go under H R, the hearings?
So, um, the process is that when they appeal it to the board, either they would actually come in front of the board, but every year in the resolution, you have, um, approved Bernice Cottrell as your hearing officer. When the stuff is happening at the student service la, if they don't appeal, if they accept that recommendation, if the cost is associated with those departments, if they do not, instead of you coming together as a board and hearing it and making decision, you have, uh, approved for several years Bernice as your hearing officer. So anytime that she comes, that's when, um, that cost comes into play.
Okay, and then the second other expense, what are some examples of that?
That is under the, um, executive administrations, administration services, which would be, um, Leslie's notary fee, um, a floral arrangement, a funeral floral arrangement, and some board appreciation supplies, decorations.
Well, you kinda said that with the first other.
That, that, no, the.
Twice, so I was just trying to get clarity on that. You said the same thing.
No, the first one is the student and employee hearings.
Okay.
And then the second one are more those administrative type costs.
Because I could have swore, I heard you say that for the first one, but is nothing like that, understand? Thank you, ma'am. And then I would agree with Ms. Russell, where it says secretaries plural, then that would be the board clerk and the assistant clerk. That there should be an increase in that, for me.
You'll note in the notes, I added that I did not put any increases until the board decided what increases were gonna be given to. So I didn't wanna just arbitrarily put a number in there, um, without the board having a conversation. So I anticipate that the board's going to do that for all staff, but I didn't wanna do that without having the board conversation first.
Well, you did everything else. I just assumed you would do that too, since you took the liberty.
Yeah, and you'll see the note in the Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, but I'm just saying you did all the rest. I'm just shocked with that.
Thank you, Ms. Page, but you'll note that it says in the notes that I was.
Okay, I got you. I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Trying to figure that one out.
Uh-huh.
Is the deputy secretary in this budget?
No.
No.
Okay.
So we take the S off secretaries, right? Because I thought she was, since she does have a backup, so who pays?
She's in the superintendent's budget.
Okay, but she's also the assistant.
But her salary is not in your budget. It would double that dollar amount. So it doesn't come out of your, your budget. She's just, in the absence of Ms. Smith, she steps in.
So we should just say secretary, because we're not covering both.
It's coming out of our, out of our business plus system. That's the way it's computer generated because it's used across all departments.
So some departments have one, some departments have multiples, but it's just, it's a programming thing. We can't correct the S.
But we just pay a, a portion, I mean, a very small portion.
We don't pay.
You don't pay anything.
The deputy clerk, yeah, the deputy clerk does not come out of the board budget at all.
I understood that, but I thought we paid an amount for deputy.
You, if you want, we could move a portion out, but the way that the payroll, it would complicate the payroll.
No, no, I'm not asking that. I just, just for clarity.
No, it's just a part of her, in the job description, job duties, it still falls. So when it was separated, when the two roles were separated from like the board clerk not being in, like, that all got cleaned up to streamline it. So it just falls, it's just a part of the job responsibilities, yeah.
And I'll go back to twenty-three nineteen, what did you say the ten thousand was? Hearings? And we, what, what have we, we've had, what's the actual? Forty-one thousand?
The actual to date under other expenses for the hearings was fifteen thousand, nine eighty-two. And you had ten thousand budgeted in that line for twenty-two, twenty-three.
And the twenty-three twenty, floral, floral arrangements and et cetera, thirty-six hundred? And we've spent twenty-four hundred, twenty-five? Or we spent, what have we spent?
Fifteen, five, eight, two, forty-four.
On twenty-three twenty?
On twenty-two, twenty-three?
Twenty-three twenty.
Oh, line item, the code, twenty-three twenty, we've spent, as of five-eight, it looks like two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And that is for, if I heard you correctly, for, um.
Board appreciation decorations, a funeral arrangement.
Thank you.
So we have those items in both other expenses and general supplies and materials? Ms. Kaiser, did, and I tried to search for it, didn't you, did you send us something that had all of these broken down?
I, I believe I have. Um, I could go back and find that. But I don't have the document that you guys are referring to that Mr. Lopez worked on. So I think you guys are seeing different notes than I am, maybe. That's okay, I just wanted to.
Our mistake. We apologize.
And you, yeah, I don't, I don't know what you're looking at.
So when are we gonna finalize this as a group? When do we talk about this? And when do we make a decision about this? And what's the deadline? And what's the deadline? When does it have to be in?
So, that time would be now, that's why the, unless, because the only way you can talk about it as a group is in a notified meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, you can't, so unless you're having an outside meeting, a special meeting, or to designate someone, the time and space would be now, and if you allocated additional time, it will be then. So, the draft that is there, that's for you all to weigh in, to agree, disagree, or offer, and come to some resolution. The deadline, technically, until we approve the entire budget with the budget software, you haven't, till then, and then even then, if you change your mind, you just would have to reconvene, and we'll make the necessary adjustments.
And so, I, so thank you, just in, so, yeah, right now would be a good time to, if there are other suggestions, and I do want to get back to Ms. Russell's suggestions on changes in the draft budget. So, now would be a good ti, an appropriate time. I know we have until twelve-thirty today. We do have a quick executive session that we do need to make space for, to honor your time, if we could do that around twelve-fifteen, to make sure that we get you out at twelve-thirty. So, but between now and then would be an appropriate time for us to discuss what's here. Yes, Ms. Page?
Now, when we last met, we had said we weren't going to add anything else, that this was going to be a budget meeting.
And it, it has to do specifically with the budget, the executive session.
It's a little frustrating to hear that, because I'm thinking, this is what we're going to work on.
We're not adding anything extra.
We should be cut short.
Ms. Page, we're not adding anything, it has to do specifically with the budget that we cannot discuss in open session, but it's specifically with the budget.
That can't wait till tomorrow?
That's up to the board.
It, it is directly related to the budget, so we couldn't talk about it in open session. It's not like an executive session on there, but it's, if you look at your agenda items, an executive content is actually in the executive content, because it's related to the budget.
I respect that, but it's always frustrating, because we say one thing, and then we get here as another thing, that, you know, I wish we could get that same respect. And we talk about surprises, it would have been nice to know this in advance, that's all I'm saying. You know, everybody wants the same respect, and we're trying to give it, but give us some too. Because we said, oh, no, no, this is restricted budget. And I know you said what's in the executive session is budget, but we deserve that respect. We should have known about this earlier, that's all I'm saying.
For, to respect everybody's time, I mean, are there any objections to the legal lowering of our budget item?
I have a question. Doctors Doublefield, did you, is the compliance person on board?
Yes.
Okay, so, that, how much would that take? How much of that responsibility would free up these legal services?
So, she just started in March, we haven't completely gauged that, because we haven't lived through it. I don't, I think Ms. Russell's starting point may be a good place to start. What I will remind you about legal is, if you look at actual versus budgeted, it's just the authority to go up to that much. If something were to come up, and we would need legal services, and it exceeded it, we would bring it back here. So, I, I would say what Ms. Russell is suggesting is a great starting point, unless you want to start at something else, because if we get to the point, you can look at historically how much we've spent, and I think the last two years, we've been under what has actually been allocated, but I, I know currently we are. So, that, we, we won't know until we live through a full year, and as she is trained around different things, we've set up some processes around policies, there are certain just day-to-day employment things that we take to her and the title support. So, we are setting up processes, and she contacts Greg's office as needed. But we, we won't know for at least a year what the actual reduction should be.
So, generically, this, the question was, in support of your suggestion that there will be some of the duties transferred to this compliance officer, correct?
Yeah, there are certain things that she does now, yeah, but we don't know, like, the complete.
Thank you.
What was, can you remind me of the amount you proposed, Ms. Russell?
Three hundred thousand.
Thank you. Any objections from board members on that amount to, for the legal services? And again, if we exceed that, that would be brought back to the board if we need to exceed that amount.
Well, I'll ask you, Ms. Russell, what you asked me last year. As you reduce in one category, are you looking to increase in other categories?
Yeah, there are a few categories that I'm suggesting to increase. The next one would be the out-of-district travel. I would, like, as I have.
Okay, just, just, in gen, generic.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
But overall decreasing the overall budget by forty-one thousand.
Okay, and then as you asked me, are you suggesting that goes to the parking lot and stays there, or is reallocated?
The forty-one thousand dollars? That's a really great question. I do not have a suggestion for where that forty-one thousand dollars should go.
So, right now, I can go to the parking lot? You understand, yeah, okay, thank you.
Well, we can just go through each of the items, hopefully you have the Excel spreadsheet in front of you, board, so that first line item under legal services, potentially decreasing that from three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred dollars from last, this current year, to three hundred thousand dollars. And I heard no objections on that currently, or questions? Ms. Humphreys?
If, if we lower that, and we have additional bills come in for some reason, do we have to republish our budget? Or just reallocate from a different?
We wouldn't have to republish our budget, we would be reallocating it from another.
From another budget.
From somewhere, yeah.
And then my next comment, I was sitting here thinking, because I'm a quiet thinker sometimes, is it possible that we don't find out at the end of the year that we've spent too much money on food or whatever that we get, monthly?
Yeah.
On board expenses?
Yes, definitely, and I know that's been, that's something that's been brought up previously, so we'll make sure that monthly, Ms. Smith, if we could just note that, that monthly, we, the board gets submitted a year-to-date for the end of that month. Thank you. Okay, next line item was around the consultant, so proposed for the draft budget is five thousand dollars for a consultant. And Ms. Russell, I didn't note every item you wrote down, so if I'm missing one, if you want to jump in.
I had no change to that, however, I will note that the only expenses utilized are the thirty-seven fifty, which is what was charged to Deion, so I'm not sure where.
That's a good question.
Marcie, where her expenses are, because they're not in this line item.
Ms. Kaiser or Ms. Smith, where would, when we have the facilitators from KSB or for the listening sessions, would that come out of the consultant fee, or would that be charged to other expenses? And again, part of this might just be cleaning up where things are charged to.
Yeah, for that specific item, I would have to look up when the purchase order was entered, where that was charged to, I don't know offhand.
Okay, thank you.
One more question, who, who is responsible for putting the things in the right category? Who makes sure the coding's correct?
I think that comes through our board clerk, who works with our finance and budgeting team to get that correct, to get that entered. So, we'll just make, we need to make sure we just get everything entered and.
So, it's our intention, moving forward, to make sure things such as listening and learning facilitators, board facilitators, all come out of this line item, just so we're all clear.
I believe so, that's what it sounds like, so, rephrase, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Page.
Cut that from five thousand to four thousand, the miscellaneous consultants?
We could, but if, if I'm hearing Ms. Russell correctly, so if we have a consultant, so that's where we would have the consultant, any facilitators for the listening and learning sessions.
But it didn't exceed that.
Right.
Last time, and I don't know how often Marcia's coming. You would think you'd get some perks from being a member from KSAB, but that's a whole another story.
And I would like to see the boards listening to her, to go back to the boards listening to her, meaning no facilitator, it was, I think that's the first time we heard from Ms. Russell, as a, I learned about what a glow party was. So, those listening tours were, for lack of a better word, open mic, we didn't have a facilitator, we, we had the listening tour, that would reduce whatever that cost is.
I'm in support of changing it to four thousand, I think while we can continue to discuss what these things look like per se, I think I would also support reducing it to four thousand.
Well, this is Yolanda, I could support reducing it, I, I am also with Ms. Russell, I want to make sure to work with the logistics. And my support is not because I necessarily agree with the logistics that have been proposed, but because I believe it's doable.
Okay, any other thoughts on that line item? Four thousand is what I'm hearing from a few board members. Okay. The next line item is advertising, and that is at three thousand dollars, a change from five thousand in this current year.
It, it, it's expensive to advertise, if you're campaigning, you know that, so, that's not bad.
Okay, hearing no changes there, we'll go to the next item, which is out-of-district travel, this is where, what covers our travel, and again, in this item, we have for all seven members to be able to attend at least three conferences, which also, I mean, it could be the NSBA Annual Conference, the CUBE Conference, KSB Conference, but this is, this would cover all board members, and I heard a proposal to increase that to thirty thousand from twenty-five thousand that's currently listed.
Yes, and I am making the rationale, while I have attended all three of these conferences, I also want to make the argument or the rationale that I would like to, I personally would also like to continue to attend the Equity Summit, whether or not I attend the advocacy part, that's, that's here nor there for me. But I think as I work with the DEI team on our equity policy, as well as how do we continue to create a district that is equity-centered, I think I learned a lot from that, and I was able to bring it back through some of the things that we're working on specifically in the policy. I don't think I alone will rack up five thousand dollars, that wasn't the intent, but just saying, if that is an open opportunity for any other board members to attend as well, because I think that work is important, I want that to also be an opportunity available for folks too. So, that was my rationale. And also, very minimal, because I know all board members do not go to all other events, so, yes.
Yes, Ms. Drew.
I'd just like to say, I think we ought to leave it at the twenty-five thousand, if we need to increase something with the amount of money that Ms. Russell has suggested, that we apply it somewhere else, it seems like our travel expenses is not high enough, in my opinion, whereas we need to add an additional five thousand dollars to it. So, I would not be in agreement of increasing that.
Mr. Lopez? I will also say, I also thought the same thing, but because you had put that if we did forth, I think there is enough in the balance for even this year, and I think most of us got to do what we wanted or were passionate about, that I think there is enough there, and also the places that these conferences are being held this year are relatively cheaper than some of the flashy, more expensive things, such as going to Orlando, so.
Other thoughts on?
I agree with Ms. Drew, I think, hold it at twenty-five thousand.
Additional thoughts?
This is Yolanda, I, I actually agree on the travel to hold it at twenty-five thousand, so, that one would be hard for me to support, just upping the board dollar amount for travel.
Well, I'll add the caveat of what I've asked of staff as well, and this is consistent with what Ms. Drew has mentioned, we should justify as well as formally report when we come back, and we can have it in any form that we want, but it has to be documented, and that would, in my mind, have some semblance of a written report. So, that's that. I'll use the phrase, by example, what I ask of staff, I would ask of us. Thank you.
I would also agree, I am happy if the board is okay, to put together something as a template, so that moving forward into July, not just for myself, because I'm saying I'm wanting to go to all four, but something that we can say we're all in agreement with, that we would like to see upon return when you are traveling on district dollars.
Correct.
I'm happy to be the person, and I can do it by.
I'm happy to help you.
Okay, awesome. I just want to make smart goals, because I know we talk about it, but if no one assigns themselves, it just, it's not a.
And we'll put a timeline on it.
Yes, July eighteenth, we will have it at a meeting.
Great, so, just in terms of the actual dollar amount, twenty-five thousand is what I'm hearing, several board members, I do hear the argument to increase this. Again, if potentially, if we need to increase it, we would just bring it back to the board. I would, I would be okay, I would agree with Ms. Russell, I think there are a lot of opportunities out there for the board to continue our development and bring back to the district and to conversations at the board. So, looking at where we're having some savings, I would be okay with increasing it, but it sounds like, and I'm trying to get consensus here, twenty-five thousand for now, to hold at this budget item, will work for the board?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Then the next item are food costs, other food costs, again, this was a suggestion to increase from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred, but I've heard some concerns or questions around what are those food costs actually, and can we, should we change that? So, open to conversation. Again, this, this covers costs for listening, listening and learning sessions out in the community, other special board meetings, you know, the, the fruit and things that we had today, so, open to conversation on what amount you want to have for food costs.
Can I make the argument, or not the argument, can I make the statement that for this other food cost and for other expenses, that someone follow up, potentially tracey with the actual what is being spent? I find it hard right now to be able to clearly say or articulate what I think it should be, without knowing what it is that we're currently charging to those two things. I've seen it before, I can't, for some reason, find it now.
So, I'm happy to follow up with Ms. Kaiser and Ms. Smith to kind of see what those are and report that back to the board via email, I can have Ms. Smith or someone kind of share that. I know Ms. Kaiser sent that previously, but we can just get an updated version of what is put into those line items. of what is put into those line items.
And I would say, other than the public events, like our listening tours, I would ask that we govern ourselves same way we ask staff. So there is a level of spending. It's not hard to figure.
Okay. Ms. Russell?
With respect, I also want to say that we also, most of us, hold outside jobs. And so I think there's a little bit of a difference there, that when I'm coming from work to this, I'm in a volunteer capacity. And so being able to be fed is a little different than being a staff member. And I understand where you're coming from, and I'm not saying let me just blow up the food budget, but I also want to be cognizant that I, as just a human being, also have needs when I'm being in these meetings. And so I hear what you're saying, and I think there is a little bit of a difference.
Well, sure, but you know, you're not going to eat twenty-five dollars worth of food at a board meeting.
Yes.
And again, as you say, we're coming from work, we have jobs. You also, other days, find food before you go to the next meeting.
That is true.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
With respect.
Sorry, I missed that last part, but I will follow up in terms of that.
With respect.
With respect, I missed that last part. But I'll follow up with Ms. Kaiser and Ms. Smith to get those actual costs, and we'll make sure we send that to the board. So that's for that other expenses line item as well, to see what falls under there. The last item, and I'm not going to get into the actual, like, pay of the board clerks, I think that's a separate conversation, we don't need to do that here. But the last conversation, or the last item, is around dues and fees. Again, it's an increase looking at, but I can follow up with Ms. Kaiser and Ms. Smith when I looked at the actual fees and registrations. And I think, Ms. Smith, Ms. Kaiser, correct me if I'm wrong, is this where registration costs for those conferences also falls under? Or is that in the out of district? No, it's in this line item, where registration for conferences comes out of. Okay, so this would include registrations for those three, two, three, whatever conferences we want to attend, NSBA, Cube, KASB, and other membership dues that we have. Board docs, I was told, comes out of a different budget, so I don't think it's covered in our budget, but I think we're getting clarity on that. So anyway, so that's what this dues and fees line item is. I increased it due to the fact that we did vote to become members of Cube, which I think is thirteen thousand dollars. And when I did the math, and I don't have it here, but, and you saw the email from Ms. Smith with some of those costs, so open to your thoughts, discussion. Yes, Ms. Page.
Well, clarity, because I didn't know if I heard Ms. Humphries correctly. Did she say we owe them thirty-eight hundred or thirty-eight thousand?
We have a balance in our account of thirty-eight thousand that we haven't spent.
Okay, I didn't know if I heard you say, that's why I'm asking for clarity, that we owed that money to KSAB.
No, I think KASB is twenty-five thousand, when you include the legal services component of it and everything. I think it's twenty-three thousand for the base membership, and then an additional couple thousand for the legal portions, and I'm not titling it correctly, but the legal piece that they provide to the district. So it's twenty-five thousand dollars, and I'm looking at Ms. Smith for clarity, for KASB. The thirty-eight thousand is the balance as of May eighth that was in that line item.
Okay, that's why I said, I didn't know if I heard.
I was asking when we pay them, because we've got a big balance.
Well, I didn't hear you clearly, so that's why I asked that for clarity. Thank you.
And I would just echo in that line item too. I think one of the dues is in that other expenses, which should actually be in dues and fees, because we did pay someone roughly, if you remember my comments around Cube, we paid someone like sixteen thousand dollars for a membership. And I think, and maybe it's not sixteen, because that other item isn't that, but the comparison was there for either NSBA or KSB that we have already paid, but it's probably in the wrong item, so. I would just say, if you could send us clarity for those three, that would be great.
Okay.
And I would ask Ms. Smith, get some clarity on KASB, because I think they're changing their passport system. So I don't know if that will increase or decrease. And then, does this figure include webinars and that?
Typically with KSB, their webinars and things, most of them, there's no additional cost. If you're a member, if there is an additional cost, it says it, but just for their standard stuff that you have access to, it's all inclusive. There are a few things that they'll say, this is not included in the full membership, and it's a hundred dollars per.
I mean, like, they have a women's summit, I think that's a hundred dollars. Is that included in this?
No.
Okay.
We can get some clarity on the dues and fees as well, line item, and follow back up with everyone on that. So if the board's okay, then I will follow up with, unless someone else wants to do it, I don't want to step on anyone's toes, but if someone, if no one else wants to do this, I will follow up on a draft with this and get with Ms. Smith and Ms. Kaiser, and pull the numbers, the dollar amounts that were given today, to create a version two of the draft budget. As it stands, if everything stays as is, which it won't because of salary increases and whatnot, but we're looking at four eighty, four hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, which is a decrease from five hundred and twenty-eight thousand last year, or current year, so. But I will follow up with Ms. Smith and Ms. Kaiser, and then send out a follow-up draft budget for the board to review. Yes, Ms. Page.
She made a recommendation in her proposal to reduce that on the part for the secretaries. Will that be included?
To increase it?
Yeah, again, I didn't want to increase, that has to do with payroll and the amount of increases to staff. And so I didn't want to make any assumptions there, so I didn't change that dollar amount, since the board has to decide what increases we will or won't give. So I didn't touch that section of it, but it will, once the board decides whatever that amount will be.
And when will we do this? Because I first heard, we need to do it today. And I'm learning, you don't walk away from here, for clarity, when will we do this?
So that was the part of the executive session part of this budget meeting, that I was saying we need to go in executive session. It's twelve twenty-three, it can wait until tomorrow, it's completely up to the board. It was really just to give the information.
And we didn't know, and I'm just asking, because I didn't know that's the part you were doing. But I just wanted to make sure we didn't walk away from here and not have a date when we're going to decide. That's all I'm asking.
I think we need to go ahead and go to executive session.
I do want to respect board members' time, and we said we'd be out by twelve-thirty, but if the board would like to give a few extra minutes for executive session, we can cover a conversation today. Otherwise, we can adjourn and finish up, so I will, I'll leave that to the board. I don't know what you want to do.
Well, you have one more component of Ms. Russell's conversation.
Yes, Ms. Russell?
I was just going to say thank you for giving us a place to start. I appreciate you being willing to listen to my kind objections, but also additions. And then I would just like to make a motion that we exact, that we go for fifteen minutes.
There's a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of, would it be non-elected personnel? Mr. Go. No, I'm sorry, negotiations, I'm sorry, to discuss matters of teacher negotiations for fifteen minutes, going in at twelve twenty-seven?
Twelve-thirty?
Twelve-thirty, going in at twelve-thirty? For fifteen minutes, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, I will email you the link to the executive session via Zoom, per Zoom.
Thank you.